All right, I'm ready.
You're good to go. Okay, welcome everybody to the City Council Beller Beach Budget Workshop, July 13th, 2020, 6:00 PM. We have called order and all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aki.
It's unmuted Patty.
Yeah, but I didn't mute it. Hold on one second. Hold on.
She's here, we can see her.
Let me.
I'm here, sorry, that was me.
All right, Councilmember Bean.
Here.
Councilmember Gaddis.
We lost him.
We see him.
He's there.
What is this? Councilmember Gaddis.
Here.
Councilmember Shirley, I don't think she's here. Councilmember Swope.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gunn, not here yet. Mayor Manzo.
Here.
City Manager Reeves.
Here.
All right, thank you everyone. Patty, you're the official host of this, right? So you're able to control everyone's muting, unmuting. This works best if you are not speaking, if you just mute yourselves, but Patty can, I guess, mute it. The only reason being is that this thing has a speaker view and if there's any noise like a dog barking next door, it's going to put that and it's going to put you on screen when you probably don't want to be. So if you do that, that'll work out real well. So we have one item on our agenda and one item only. It's the discussion and review of the fiscal year 2020 and 2021 budget, put on by Lynn Reeves who presented and made the budget. And at that, I'm going to turn it over to Lynn Reeves. Lynn?
Mayor and consul, what we're going to go over tonight is the fiscal 2020-21 budget. The first screen that I'm showing you, which I, we updated again today and Patty sent that out to you. It's listing all the expenses by account number going down the screen from the most expensive, as an example, other contracted services. That includes law enforcement, some contracts we have in Public Works, the code enforcement contract that we currently have, and our contracted consultant for IT. And in the non-departmental, it is just various contracted items that are checked out. But that's just to give you a summary from the highest to the lowest for the budget. So if you've got questions on that, we'll, we can talk about them later. So I just wanted to show that to you, to show you the expenses from the highest to lowest. So we'll start with the budget. And if you'll turn to page seven, which I'm going to show on the screen, if you have your paper budget. This is a proposed budget calendar for this year. Our, this is our budget workshop today. We have another one scheduled if we need it on Monday, the 20th. And then on, also on the 20th, we set our tentative millage rate that we're going to submit to the property appraiser and that has to be to them by the 4th of August. So the trim notices can be mailed out in a timely. Then in September, we'll have our first public meeting on the 9th of September to adopt the budget. And then our second one will be on the 21st of September to adopt the final budget, budget and millage rate. Turning to page eight, this is a summary of all the budget for the city. Currently, we're using the 2.0394 millage rate, which is our current millage rate, with the ad valorem tax collection of $1,164,305. We'll, we'll go through all this in a little more detail on the next couple of pages. But other taxes and fees, intergovernmental things. We've also included in here the assessments. And when you talk about the assessments, you see the 132,000. That is the assessment for Bellevue Estates Island Undergrounding Project. And then the stormwater assessment out to the right, which is a separate enterprise fund, which is new this year. Going, going down to the expenditure category and stop me if you have any questions and we'll get into the more detail. The personnel budget for this year is 529,000. The total operating budget is 1,442,118 and capital projects, 892,000, along with the debt service being 320. And that is the debt service on this building plus the debt service on the Bellevue Estates Island. So, yes.
Why would the debt service for Bellevue Estates Island be included in that when we're paying that separately supposedly?
Well, it, it's a lump. It lumps in. This is a summary of all the funds. So you're seeing the debt service on the building plus that. That's the two debt services that we have, even though you're paying it. And if you look up further, you've got an assessment of 132,000 that's actually paying that. So it's a, government accounting is a little unique. You gotta put an expense in, even if you're getting money from somewhere else to show it.
Okay, that explains it. Thank you.
So if you move to page 10 and it's on the screen, these are the numbers for the proposed millage rate that we're, we've set up. Our value went up this year 28 million or to 594,694. It's about a 4.95 increase in our taxable value. On the next page, there was an error, a typo, but we got that fixed. If you look at the last sentence on the pages you have, it probably showed 95,000 in this 59 number. The 59 is correct. It's not 95. We picked up a wrong number. And what we've added to this chart is to kind of show you what the trend of the taxable value has been doing, along with our tax rates of what the current, or 2019-20 tax rates are by agency. So we get about 13% in a round number of the taxable money that comes in for the ad valorem. Our share is about 13% overall. This sheet is showing you what the property appraiser sent to us on July 1st. It's showing basically where the taxable values were adjusted. The preliminary, it went down about five tenths of a percent or five hundredths of a percent from what the original one was, which was five. And this, this comes from the property appraiser. They send a preliminary one out in, on June 1st and then they send this one out on July 1st. Next page, this just gives you some graphs showing you what percentages of taxes in the general revenue and the operating. And you should have all that in front of you, or you can look at it on the screen. So we will go to page 15. And the, the millage rate proposed shows an income of 59,000 higher than the current year. Some of the things that we've reduced and part of that is, we don't really know. As an example, I'm going to go down to the state shared revenue. They haven't trued that up for the year. So we don't really know, you know, I put in about a 10% drop on it for next year. But we won't really know that real number till sometime in August when they true up everything. And I've shown some other drops in things like the utility service taxes, the franchise fees, things, things of that nature that we normally have income. And because of the pandemic, we're, we're not seeing. We don't really have a reasonable assurance that it's going to stay at a level that it was in the past. And with, with the current situation, it could last longer than even we anticipate now. The trash, I expect them to, to raise, you know, we'll be paying a little more for our trash, but I don't think we're going to have to raise the trash rates. Because when we did it last year, we figured in this increase for this year that waste management will probably be submitting to us shortly. Any questions on the revenues on this page? Okay, page 16. I left the, you know, of course, the interest earnings, we reduced that considerably because the interest rates have went south for the most part. We're still heavily invested in the Small Business Administration, which those rates fluctuate. But the rates we could get from CDs are a lot less. So we've just kept the money in, in the SBA. And it's very easy to access and it's a very flexible fund. The community center rentals, we've lost a lot of rental for this year. We were, we were going forward, making progress. Of course, when the pandemic hit, everyone, you know, canceled or some canceled, some moved out to the future. But I guess I'm in the thought process that maybe by Christmas, this will be gone. So maybe we'll get a Christmas present and going forward, we can pick up that rental revenue in the future. The other miscellaneous things are things like lien searches, site plan fees that we collect. The site plan fees for the most part are things that our consultant engineer does. And he in turn bills us, so it's a pass-through expense. Some of the things that I do personally, like the NPDS stuff, the city gets that revenue. It's just part of doing business. So we'll go down to, right now, we're projecting an inner fund transfer of 266,040 from the, and the majority of that's going to end up in the stormwater fund for the year for capital projects. That's a significant drop. The stormwater fund did help us going forward. And of course, rental registration will help us going forward, we hope. Or I'm confident of that. So that's the current reserve fund balance that we would need to take from reserves. Okay, then we go down to the expenditures for each department. City clerk expenditures are up a little bit, partially because of the elections that we're having. We've got to pay for them. So elections for the, actually, we're ending up with two next, next year. So that, that in itself is going to create a little more expense. The rest, the rest of the areas, we're going to have a 3% increase in finance. That, that's set up in their contract for the accountant that's doing our work. My department's very negligible. Actually, that's probably the raised percentage, which I've recommended 3% for everyone. So you're going to go down, down the list. Non-departmental went up a little bit, but others went down a little bit because I'm moving the telephone into non-departmental. So it's all captured in one department instead of trying to charge the clerk's department $3 a month for phone or $15. We're going to move it to non-departmental. So that's one of the new things. Code enforcement, if we continue with the sheriff's contract, that's going to go up about 2.6%. And at this point, I, I will tell you, I have some concerns and I think we could save that money and just partially go back to an in-house system. He's currently working about 12 hours a week. And you've seen kind of what code enforcement through the reports. So that's something that we probably need to discuss from, as a consul in total. Sanitation, I talked about. Public Works, that 58,000 actually is getting transferred to the stormwater fee. Because that will be a department on its own, so it won't be part of the, the overall. So there are some things that are dropping in that nature. Let's keep going. Now, are there any questions on the department budgets? You've got a little different layout this year and, and I'll just go to the first one. This is the city clerks. It kind of shows it in, in the, by, by operating account number. And I gave you a copy that gave it in more detail. I'll kind of show it here. I gave you a copy of this that gives you by line item, what's in that line item for each department. The budget this year is a little more streamlined and I attribute that to the, the discussions I had with the accounting people and trying to make it a more easy to read and understand budget. So this is an example of, of the clerk. It's not an example, it's actual budget. So are there any questions on the clerk's budget? Or do you just want me to keep going? Hearing nothing?
Keep it going.
Keep it going. Okay. Let me get to my next page. Okay, well, we're going to skip a bunch of pages unless you want to go, get to specific by departmental. And if you have questions and you think about them even after this work session, please email me and I'll try to answer and then I'll send the answer out to all the council members in one email. So we're going to go to page 29. Whoops, one passed. This is the general fund projects for next year. And most of these are savings things, like the painting for City Hall, carpet replacement for City Hall. The thing that's a little bit different in here is where it says beach access improvements. There's $70,000 earmarked in there and that's for the beach walking accesses. And 50 of that is coming back to us in a grant from the county. So we have to show the total amount and that'll give us about $100,000 to redo all those beach accesses and the county's going to contribute 50 to it. So it's almost a 50-50 match at this point. In the computer hardware and software, I've budgeted in there for iPads for the city console. I think as we go forward, especially in things like we're doing now and for the future, that, that would be beneficial for the city council to have and, and we could put the, you know, the meeting notices, the agenda, everything on there. So that's in there. When you get down to the Z more, those are savings things. And the ATV, this would be the year that it'll get replaced. We've got $12,000 set aside already, so there'll be another 4,000 put in it and that will buy that. At the very, the, the rest of these are savings for replacement of the tractor, the community improvement truck and the large utility truck. A new thing that's in here, first year, is the budget for the security camera. And we, the staff has worked with a couple vendors and Councilmember Gaddis in looking at putting security cameras around the building interiorly and externally. And we're pretty comfortable that this is pretty close to what the amount of the cost will be. Excuse me a minute.
Lynn, one question.
Yeah.
Will you be able to take a look at the park with those cameras from City Hall? Or will we have to add something, you know, such as a parking lot behind?
The, the, the cameras right now are mainly focused on the corners of this building. So I don't think they will reach out to the park itself. And at this point, we, we focused on the building, the parking lot, the fronts, the back and interiorly.
If you don't mind, I'll touch on that right quick. If a, a camera was to be able to clearly see the park, or at least a good majority of it, to be able to pick out details, you're looking at upwards of three, four grand for a camera with that type of resolution. It's just not practical, Marv.
All right, I was wondering because there's a lot of dogs, people walking dogs in that park and a lot of people don't pay to park there. So I was hoping that possibly we could do something to capture, you know, the park and the, and the parking areas, maybe in the future.
Yeah, and I don't think the, having a camera there, someone not paying to park would do us any good because the citation would have to be issued to the vehicle. It's not like you can issue them a citation and then leave because you saw them on a camera.
So that's true, but kind of give us an idea of, you know, how much coverage we need in that park. Maybe certain times, police hitting that park at the time when we have people walking dogs in there when they're not supposed to. That's all.
Okay. I will make a note of that.
Thank you, Lynn.
Okay. The next page we're going to go to, and basically behind all these pages are, as an example, the computer hardware, you know, to fund purchase of commuter, computer equipment, blah, blah, blah. That's really what's behind. It's just the, the capital project fund items lined up. So now we'll go to page 45. This is a capital fund analysis. Or no, actually 42. This, this again shows you the capital projects, revenue, intergovernmental assessments, interest, which is very dropping. And then our expenditures in the capital fund. Part of it is debt service, of course, but it's almost broken even, even in the, in this next year. Going to page 45. This is things we, we do like Bayside Park beautification, which we don't have any money funded in this year. The tennis courts, this is the second installment of that. So we can move forward with renovating those. We're saving some more money for the boat ramp. The Morgan Park improvements, this is to save for milling of the parking lot because it's got a lot of cracks in it. And we're saving till we obtain enough money going forward to do the project. Street resurfacing, we've set that at 60. This year, we had 120 so we could do the paving to help with the paving in the BEI undergrounding area, which was held off. The other highlighted things, the seawall, we saved money for that. The bridges repairs. We've got a healthy savings in those two line items. So this year, I didn't put any money in the capital budget for the repairs on 22nd and Harrison. Both of them have a little over $60,000 in funding already in their savings accounts. As an example, yeah. 22nd Street has 62,000 and Harrison has, has 30. And we just did Harrison a couple of years ago. So I don't foresee a major, major repair costing over probably 10 or $15,000. That's what it's been the last few years. So this year, we did not elect to put any additional money in the repair budget.
Lynn, question on that bridge. I know to plan ahead on the replacement of the 22nd Street Bridge, that was done a few years ago. Am I not correct?
Yeah, we've started that right now through 2020, which is this year. We'll have 173,000 set aside for that. And we've been saving 30 a year and until that needs replacement. And FDOT did an inspection last, last year. So there'll be a new inspection in 20. But the last two inspections have been good with some minor repairs, mainly some cracking repairs and, you know, where the iron becomes exposed because of the salt water that's flowing in under there.
Right. What, what I'm thinking is, we've never done a total recent cost of repairing that entire bridge, have we?
No, not recently.
Not recent. I just wonder if it's worth it so we know what the cost is going forward to readjust the savings on it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a note and see if we can get some numbers for that cost for bridge. Going, okay, going down. Of course, I talked about the seawalls. I also, that's just a savings account. Our two major seawalls, we've, we've already repaired. And, and that's the, the one on the Harrison Bridge and the one on Bell Isle. So this money is going to be utilized eventually for the seawalls that are in our park areas as they become deficient. The street lighting program, the money set aside there, part of it is for the bridge lighting for the causeway because we, we're saving money to, if we have to replace it. The county, for the most part, is, has done maintenance for us on it. And I know since I've been here, we've never gotten a bill for that. Like if they replaced a light bulb or went out there. So that relationship with the street lighting department of the county that takes care of that for us has been good. And they seem to replace everything as we need it. But for the future, we may need to replace those lights. If what happened in 2017 to the lights on the other side of the bridge, when they were all laying in the middle of the bridge from Bel Air bluffs. So that's what that funding is. And going forward, we want to look at our street lighting plan and eventually change out some of the wooden poles and pick the worst ones to start replacing them with concrete. So, huh, yes.
I'd like to just go back when, when June Van Sekooy and myself went through all the parks. We did notice there was a deficiency with a lot of ground missing behind our seawalls at 16th Street.
Somebody's calling. Okay, I will make a note of that and we'll double check that again. Kyle might have done something to it already.
All right.
Behind the seawall. Behind the seawall.
Yeah, I lost the, um, pages you have up on the screen. I don't know why.
Forty six. And then, huh, you've got, you don't see it?
No, I just see zoom up there. That's all I see.
Well, they're on the screen still. Does everyone else see it?
Glenn has them. Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, moving through this, then behind those items are the individual, uh, sheets that show as an example, the roof replacement for the community center, what we're saving and what we estimate it will cost us in the long term. Then we move to, uh, and if you've reviewed those and have any questions, I'll be glad to answer any. Then we move to the, uh, Marina Fund, which is page sixty six. And, uh, this basically, uh, we've, we've estimated, we actually increased the, uh, parking fee budget because, well, we'll see how long it, it lasts. But, uh, the parking fees in the marina have, uh, risen more than double in the last two months, which I think it's because people were locked up, couldn't go to the beach. Uh, but slip rentals will be maintained pretty much status quo. Uh, there's a little difference in those based on if it's a resident or non-resident. So there is a, we've changed out some slips this year, so some of that will go. And eventually, uh, the access will be transferred. And if you look at the bottom there where it says other financing uses, that forty thousand dollars typically, uh, it's been between forty and forty-five each year. We transfer to, uh, the general fund at the end of the fiscal year. Uh, so it's a, it's a revenue source. Repairs and maintenance, things of that nature are pretty much standard. We've, we put in a little bit of increase for utility costs going up, but it's, it's minor. The next page, uh, actually shows, gives you a list of the, the fees we're collecting from the owners and whether it's a property owner, uh, or a resident, non-resident, and the fees we're collecting from them. Okay, then we will go to our new fund, which is brand new this year, and you just, uh, passed the ordinance last week. Uh, and we'll be moving on with that process. One thing that I mentioned at the, uh, meeting last week, uh, we're going to have to fund, it, it appears from the county's subcontractor, uh, a payment of about twenty-three thousand dollars. Uh, I have asked them if we can negotiate, but haven't got any warm fuzzies from them. Uh, so, uh, we're probably going to have to approve that so we can make sure that the fee, uh, gets started October one as we planned. So that'll probably be on your next, uh, council meetings budget. Uh, going forward, if you move to page seventy-three, this is Stormwater Fund, uh, we're estimating the assessment at a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Uh, when I talk to you about transferring, uh, out of the general fund and the two hundred and sixty-six that's going, we're going to transfer, uh, three hundred and seventy-five thousand. But that's, uh, uh, the two sixty-six is net of all the expenses and the revenue that we're projecting coming in. So that number's about a hundred and ten thousand higher, but that money is coming from the general fund also. Uh, and that's to fund, uh, the stormwater projects, uh, the maintenance we do, uh, the MPDS, uh, storm and drain, uh, maintenance, uh, contractual services with, uh, Pinellas County and street sweeping, which are all part of stormwater. The capital projects next year total, uh, we put fifty thousand dollars in for valley curb replacements and four hundred and twenty-three thousand is projected number for the twelfth and thirteenth street, uh, project that's currently in the fund. And, uh, as we gave you, if you, uh, look at the, the next thing, it's just showing you, uh, it's not in detail with the projects, but on the, uh, CIP priority, it shows you each year that the, wha- what project we're projecting. And, uh, I do need those, uh, spreadsheets back that I emailed you. So if you haven't sent them back, please do, uh, so we can get those averages for you. Uh, this is just showing this, the stormwater fund and the valley curbs and then the stormwater project. So.
Lynn, uh, question on the valley curbs. This is what you were talking about. Waiting until, uh, this is in place to, to address the valley curbs in BEI?
Yes, we're, we're a little bit short of funding, uh, in the current. Let me look if it tells me that here. Cause we've already got the quote. No, it doesn't. I don't have that number in front of me, but, uh, with this, we'll still have probably another twenty-five that we can utilize for other areas of the city. The paving, we're, we're going to have some excess so we can pave and, uh, some other areas of the city that we aren't doing stormwater projects on, uh, or that's the plan right now. Um, and going forward and how we're going to try to base that pavings on the, uh, pavement condition index that we did the study. And, uh, we've come up with a ranking, uh, one through, uh, let me tell you. We're not going to do things as an example. We're not going to do things to places that we're going to be doing stormwater projects. Uh, but we've got a ranking, uh, like the area at Bell Isle between the two hibiscuses. It needs repaired. Uh, that's a high priority. Uh, Harrison is a high priority. Those are the, the immediate high priorities. Uh, but we have stormwater projects for some of the other areas like Cedar Drive and Eighteenth, uh, Spruce Drive. We don't want to do those until we do the stormwater projects in those areas. So that, that index, that program we bought, uh, turned out pretty good. Uh, it gave us a lot of good information and I think it assisted us in looking at. In the future budget, we're going to actually do what we did with the stormwater, uh, projects where you actually, uh, see where that project is, like on the, the, uh, CIP sheets that I sent out to you. Which I'll just flash up. I sent this out to you. You actually, we can tell you, okay, in two thousand twenty-two, uh, what project we're, we're planning to do. And it's broke out, uh, in this year through twenty-four, twenty-five. And then the, the last few projects are in the future. But, uh, we're trying to, we're going to do that in a future budget with the paving and the, uh, to be able to share that with you. So we'll just say Mayor Manzo Street in, which is not going to happen, Mayor Manzo, but in two thousand twenty, uh, eight is going to get their street paved. But, uh, his, his street is really low on the totem pole. Actually Seventh Street is like six from the bottom for the pavement condition. But there again, there's going to be some work done on Seventh and Eighth, uh, as soon as we put the bid out to bid and the engineer gets all the permits. Okay, I also gave you, sent this out. This is a summary of the major portion of the contracts and, uh, I've got a little ranking there and, and I think the, the, uh, council needs to look at a few of them and decide how they want to, you know, the, the contract. The one that I have, uh, have some different thoughts about is the, the code enforcement. I think we should bring that back in-house and, uh, move forward. Uh, the, uh, Sheriff's Office, they went up about two point six percent also. And Fred, I've sent to him the, the contract. City Attorney's expenses have went up quite significantly this budget year. Uh, and I think that was an increase, uh, because of, uh, public records requests, increased expenditures. Uh, and, and I think the council needs to review this to look at some type of cost containment. Because if we go forward, uh, as we're going, uh, long-term, it's going to really impact the budget in total. Uh, engineering service, you'll see some that I put, uh, not applicable. And the reason I say that, like Clearwater Gas is a franchise fee, uh, they pay a six percent of their revenue. Uh, it expires in two thousand thirty-two, uh, Forward Pinellas. That's a planning thing and we only pay if we use those, uh, use them. And we will next year be using them for the, uh, planning document, uh, that is due in twenty-one. Uh, when you look at CPWG, Pinoni, Duel, uh, they haven't done any projects for us this year. Uh, mainly because, uh, the numbers that they gave us to do, the stormwater project were higher than the numbers that, uh, Engineering Sciences Group gave us. Uh, Cardinal does the NPDS report. Uh, and I've shared the numbers that we've spent through the, through the year, through the end of May. And, uh, they also did that grant research report. Duke Energy is another franchise fee, uh, Salt Marsh, the auditor, uh, sometime after the first of the year, we need to do an RFP and, uh, look at, sending that out for an auditor to bid on that. As you know, uh, they, they were, uh, our normal auditing firm was, uh, bought out and now Sart- Salt Marsh Cleveland and Gunn have taken over that contract, uh, through this, uh, fiscal year. Uh, Susan Moore, you just approved her contract for two more years. Uh, John Wolf, uh, we haven't had any Board of Adjustment hearings that we needed a magistrate for. Uh, when we've had them, the few that we've had, the members that are on the Board of Adjustment have, uh, been able to have a quorum and attend the meeting. So that's, that's a positive. Uh, and Victor Marketing is the videotaping. And, uh, I think for the most part, Victor does a, a real good job. Sometimes he's a little backed up with the videos, but, uh, overall I think he does a good job. So that's a list of the contracts. And then where are we? A new document, which we're still working on. Uh, this is something that we can put out to the residents. Uh, it just kind of gives a breakout. We'll call it a budget in brief, uh, and what we're doing. It, it basically shows the revenues where they come from, uh, and, uh, then down below the expenses, personnel, capital, improvement projects, operating, uh, and the debt service. And then if you go to the second page, it, it again shows you something that we had on the previous, uh, slide. Uh, I'm adding that to it because I think people, the, the residents need to understand, a lot of people think that they're paying a hundred percent of the taxes to us and that's not the case. Actually, last year or this current year, I think it worked out at like twelve point seven percent. And I'm sure this number's rounded where she, uh, they've set up the graph for thirteen percent. So does anyone have any questions of me?
Nice job.
Uh, one second, I'm getting there.
You're not unmuted, Mayor? Oh.
Hold on.
All right. I think you got it. Thank you, Patty. Ben, um, good presentation. Uh, the, um, criteria that you had, I don't know what you're looking for on this chart that has the red thing on it. It says sort it. I mean, I see ones, twos, threes. Are we looking to prioritize them in numerical order? Are they one, two, three rankings? I'm not quite sure what you're looking for from us.
Okay, if you go up into the, uh, the little, I'm going to try to show you on my screen because I don't have this up. That little green area in that, those are the, uh, strategic plan goals and, uh, actually four and three are flipped, but we want you to rank them wi- with that. And then the, uh, to, to be able to say that the secondary goal, because as an example, I'm just going to use, uh, something down the list, uh, that'll be a little simpler. We'll, we'll look at the streetlights. Well, the primary goal would be a number two. You know, it's tax money. And number three would be the aesthetics as an example last year. So you give us your, your ranking based on those items and put it. So it's a, a ranking of one to four. And then we will take the average of all council members and, uh, give you the average in a, another spreadsheet. And, uh, we are working on some modifications to that. So, you know, at this point, if I get the preliminary and then there may be a second one that I asked you for more information.
I'm still not sure I'm following you. Is it just the area in red you want ranked or everything on this page?
Everything on the page. What, what is your priority from one to four? And then it's just an average. So as an example, I'm just going to pick one out that I have. Council member ranked it as, uh, the carpet was a three as an example. So if you just mark it one to four and send it back to me, then we'll capture this. And you will see on there, the rankings average there to the left of that column. It shows what the average was, not the stormwater so much. Cause we've set up that projection for the stormwater. I, I think everyone here would say stormwater is number one, uh, going forward. So it, it's just for you to give us a little feedback on what you feel is, is a priority.
You might even be able to streamline it a little bit because I, the stormwater has pretty much already been filtered out. So I mean, if you were to just pick it up below the gray and the orange areas, I mean, there's only about another, what, uh, twenty, thirty line items there. You know, I, I, I think the stormwater stuff is pretty much, uh, bubbled to the top of the priority list. And so the, the question is of all the remaining projects and cap improvements left, where do those fit into this strategic plan priorities? And then so if everybody can kind of, uh, look at those ones below the gray and the orange and kind of, uh, factor in what strategic goals are supported by those things primarily. And then secondarily, we can kind of compute a priority there. And then we can subjectively go through it and say, well, does this, we'll, we'll give it a sanity check. Well, does this make sense? You know, this, this, uh, capital improvement, uh, is. You know, this, this capital improvement is at the very top of our priority list by the strategic goal that it supports, but does it make sense? I mean, based on the economy, based on resident feedback, based on everything else, does it, does it pass the litmus test for, is that actually what we want to pursue next?
Yeah. Yeah, it's mainly to, 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 to get feedback from each council member because every council member has a, probably a different theory on what is, is a priority in the city. As an example, one, uh, I know several of you think the security cameras are a priority. So you're probably going to rank them higher than someone that doesn't think they're a priority. And I will tell you just as an outlier, we for some of our expenses, we submitted a grant to the law enforcement agency. And I know we're not a law enforcement agency, but my understanding is for the pandemic and just to, we don't know if we've got it yet or not. But they allocated twenty-five thousand dollars to the city of Bel Air Beach. So we think, uh, and we made sure we spent twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and I think it was ninety-nine dollars or something. But that's for supplies like the PPNE stuff. And in talking to the people at this law enforcement, what they told me was there's the potential that, you know, we've got a high potential of getting it. So, uh, and then now the, also the county has come out with some money. So we'll see if we can get anything. It's not going to help our revenues, but it might help some expenses going forward. Any questions?
It looks like you put a lot, put a lot of work into this. This is, this is good stuff.
Well, I, you know, we, the staff did a great job this year. We tried to reconfigure the budget so it's not this big thick book. So what, what, once we get through all of it, this will be our budget. The backup stuff is just peripheral backup stuff that we wanted to provide to the council. And if, uh, you know, if the public wants to know anything about it, we'll be glad to meet with them. And hopefully we'll have a time when we can have a public forum that we can kind of talk a little more about the budget in the future. So people understand it a little better.
Patty, do we have anybody from the public here tonight?
There, yes, Mayor, there's two phone calls. I can see the phone calls. I can't see the raised hands like I did earlier in the day when we were testing it. But I can unmute them and ask them if they want to speak, if council wants them to speak.
Yeah, let me just ask council first. It's, it's, we've traditionally always welcomed input from the public, but it's not required. We're not making decisions. Does anyone have an issue if we open up for public questions?
No.
Not hearing any Patty, if you could open them up then, and we'll try and limit it to three minutes if there's questions.
Okay, I'm just going to do one at a time. Okay?
Yes, of course. Yep.
All right. And this person is named Jane. So Jane?
Quiet people.
Jane?
Yes.
Did you have a comment or a question? You did not? Okay, thank you. Let me mute that. Okay, now let me go. The other one is just a phone number. So I'll have to ask. I can unmute it. Hold on, it's not unmuting. Hold on one second. It's not coming off of mute. So.
I believe that they have control over it with a, uh, on their keypad. They can turn it off.
They may have turned it off.
Yeah, I thought so too. Yeah, that I can ask to unmute, but they have to actually unmute it, right? Councilmember Gaddis?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, they're not unmuting.
This is just our first discussion on it. So if anybody has a question that did not get heard tonight and they want to be heard on it, they could write to, or just call in tomorrow to City Hall, speak to Lynn or to Patty, get that question and we'll make sure it gets picked up on our next meeting. So that's not a problem. Then there being no other public questions or comments, we'll close that and come back if there's any other council comments or questions.
Dave, question for you. I still have Zoom on the screen, nothing else.
Okay, I, I don't. And I don't think anyone, anyone else ran into that. I, as far as what the problem is, now you're talking about yourself or the overall screen.
All right, I have the, of course, pictures of everybody on the right. And then in the center of the screen is Zoom. Nothing else. Nothing that Lynn has presented since I told you about it and I tried to click on a few things to re-initiate per instructions from Zoom, nothing happened.
Sounds to me like you've got a malfunction of some sort. I'm, I'm not real sure because I've never seen that before. What, did you ever get a picture at all?
Yes, I did when we first started.
Okay.
I think what.
Would be to disconnect right quick and then log right back in.
What I will do, Dave, is I'll take a picture of this so you can see it the next time I see you and maybe we can figure it out.
Okay.
Yeah, or just send it to us, Marv and I've got.
All right, send it to you, Lynn.
Okay.
From this end, just so everybody knows, from this end, I think Patty, I don't think you muted me the second time. I muted myself to try and keep, you know, so there's no background noise. And then it wouldn't let me unmute myself. So I'm not so sure that it's not like, once you mute yourself, it may not let you back in, but other than that it ran fine.
All right, let, let me add to that right quick. I wanted to address that issue. I, I know this is our maiden voyage on Zoom. Basically, there are a lot of switches in the, in the setup. You're basically, once you, you turn them a certain way, one way or the other, they become the default for all meetings unless you want to change them by meeting. The not allowing people to unmute is because we have one number that we've given out to everyone. One conference, basically one type of login. And in the, the, you know, a little bit better structured version of this that we're going to have to practice with. And Patty, I'll come down and work with you to get it set up. It's basically, we'll be given one type of login and then we'll post a public login. We all have the public type of login right now. If you notice, it didn't ask for a name or, or, or much of anything really. Whenever we get to that point, everyone on call-in will, uh, that doesn't have the special access will automatically be muted. Once they unmute, Patty can control it, but as soon as it's muted again, they can't, they can't barge in. Whereas we will be able to turn it off and on as we, as we want to.
And this, this is our maiden voyage with Zoom. So, uh, and.
Overall, it worked well. I think the only other thing, I mean, I'm doing this on a laptop. Lynn, I had your stuff in front of me. I could see it, but if you were looking, if the public was looking in, I think it might've been hard to see some of those numbers. I don't know if you could enlarge that screen a bit. Other than that, it looked, it looks fine. So.
Yeah, there is, I, yeah, there is a way I could, uh, I think I can make it a full screen, which brings the, the numbers and stuff closer to you.
And another suggestion, if you don't mind, is, uh, like the page we're currently looking at on your screen. I know that it's printed to, to read like a book.
Right.
If you could change the page size whenever you turn it into a, a something else for this, like just say all the pages, make them landscape. That gives you more text in a wider, a wider format. And that way you can enlarge it because basically we've got two-thirds of the screen that are useless.
Right, right.
Hey Dave, another, another comment here. I think a phone call came in and that's what scrambled a screen for me. I think that's what happened on my other, on my line because I'm connected, phones are connected.
Uh, that's possible.
Oh, and I, and again, I also have the app on the computer and I didn't, I tried to go through the app to set up the meeting and I wouldn't, I couldn't connect. So I had to go back to email and click on that link. So I don't know if there's a conflict between the app and the link.
I'm, I'm not really sure, Marv. Again, probably just to see if you could get it back. I mean, it's not going to hurt anything for you to disconnect and bump right back in because it, it, it actually connects pretty quickly. Will, if you want to try that, we'll talk about you while, uh, while you're doing that.
All right, now to go off of this thing, I'm on, I'm connected to Firefox. Just go to that and disconnect and go back to the email and reconnect.
Yes.
All right, I'll try it.
While we're waiting for Marv, anybody else have any questions on the Zoom or anything else that you need from Lynn on the budget?
Just to, to clarify to everyone, uh, next Monday, we'll have another budget work session with any of your comments. And I'll have the budget document in front of me. Also, we need to set the tentative millage rate, uh, which I mentioned earlier. So there will be a special meeting after the work session, uh, to set the tentative millage rate. And at this point, I'm recommending that we set it at two-point-oh, two-point-oh-three-nine-four, which is the current millage. Now, we can't, once we set that, we can't go higher. But you can go lower. But this initial tentative millage rate is what we need to submit to the property tax praiser. So they can send out the trim notices. Any questions?
Great job. Great job. The format is great and kudos to the staff and Dave for the meeting format. Boy, it's really working out really well. Good job all.
Back to you, Mayor.
Just wait on Marv. Marv, you let me know and I'll call for the adjournment here.
Uh, well, I tell you, I went out, but I never really went all the way out. I still had, I had a blank screen, the Apple screen, and everybody stayed up on the right-hand side. Went out, tried to bring it back in and I still can't reconnect.
Why don't we do this? If we can keep maybe you on the line and if Lynn and Patty and maybe Dave, whoever's the experts want to stay around, that would be great. And then we can release everybody else unless anybody else says anything else, because this is a limited meeting. So really we're not supposed to have anything else.
I'm good with it.
Okay, do we have motion for adjournment?
Shall move.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Bye. See everybody Monday night. Marv, I think Marv went off the line.
I'm, I'm here.
Okay.
The deputy will see you tomorrow, Mayor, at one-thirty.
Thirty, yes, be there. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, Lynn, I don't.